Come up a second, I'll sit you foot on. Mr. Baker.
Good evening, we'd like to call the Durham City Council meeting to order and certainly want to welcome all of you that are here for us this evening on Monday, the seventeenth. If we could just take a moment of solid meditation and I would ask those who might remember the former Governor Jim Holzhizer, who we understood passed, passed today and his family, thank you. Councilman Brown, could you lead us in a pledge, please? As the clerk, if you would call a roll, please.
Mayor Bell.
Present.
Mayor Pro temp Cole McFadden. Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Cotati. Councilmember Moffett.
Here.
And Councilmember Shul.
We have four proclamations that we'd like to present this evening, and the first, I would ask our Director of Parks and Recreation, Rhonda Parker, if she would join me, please. The proclamation speaks to Parks and Recreation Month, where its Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Durham, where its Durham Park and Recreation Activities are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our city, ensuring the health of all residents, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of our city and region, where its Durham Parks and Recreation Programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who have mental developmental or physical disabilities, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all residents. Where its Durham Parks and Recreation Programs increase our community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, where its Durham's Park and Recreation Areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, where its Durham Parks and Natural Recreation Areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, where its Durham's Park and Recreation Natural Areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, where its U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, where its the city of Durham recognizes the benefits derived from the Parks and Recreation Resources. Now therefore, William V. Bill Bell, Mayor of the city of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim July as Parks and Recreation Month in Durham, and hereby urge all residents to take special note of this observance by visiting our parks, participating in programs and special events throughout this month. Again, witness my hand, corporal cell of the city of Durham, North Carolina, this is the seventeenth day of June, two thousand thirteen, and I will present this to Ms. Parker for any comments that she may have.
Thank you, Mayor Bell, Mayor Pro temp, Cora Cole McFadden, Sitting Manager, Tom Bonfield, City Attorney, City Council, and Deputy City Manager. I appreciate the proclamation because July is Parks and Recreation Month, and I would just like to mention just a very couple, a couple of things, is that summer camp started for young people today, so we have a nine-week camp going on, and we also have our pools that opened up last week and our spray grounds are open. But I really wanted to invite all of you to the city's Fourth of July Celebration, which will be at the DBAP, and there will be a game, you have to buy tickets for the game, but at the bottom of the inning, the gates open up for anyone who wants to come in and participate. We have fireworks scheduled for nine fifteen after comments from our officials, and the American Tobacco Campus and the Durham Bulls and Capitol Broadcasting are working with us, there will be a jazz concert going on from six to eight, and there'll be performers strolling around, so there'll be a lot of things going on for the whole family. So we hope you'll come out and join us and celebrate the July Fourth. Thank you.
Next, we'd like to ask Donna Long, Director of Solid Waste. Donna would join me, some of you probably saw some of the employees as you came through the lobby this evening, you might have eaten a piece of cake like I did, but these are employees that probably everyone in the city gets an opportunity to see at some point in time in terms of the service they provide, and without the service they provide, our city probably would really be in pretty bad shape, and it's not to say that all cities don't have waste collection departments, but I think our employees in particular do a super job in the work that they do. This recognition is Solid Waste Employees Appreciation Day, and it speaks to the fact that where solid waste management employees provide a very essential and vital service handling the collection of solid waste of our citizens, where solid waste management employees are exposed to the dangers of working high-traffic areas, braving elements on a daily basis and work very hard, where solid waste management employees performing in their daily duties help reduce the spread of disease, reduce blight, and serve as community ambassadors, where its Solid Waste Management Department strives to be leaders in the area of technology and good stewards of the environment, where its Solid Waste Management Department is a diverse community represented by all races, creeds, genders, and operate efficiently in the collection of waste materials, where its the city of Durham is a leader in the state in the efficient collection of solid waste materials and its appreciation of solid waste personnel. Now therefore, William V. Bill Bell, Mayor of the city of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim June seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, as Solid Waste Employees Appreciation Day in Durham, and do further call upon fellow residents of the city of Durham to observe this day and do his or her part to recognize the employees of the Solid Waste Management Department that work daily to complete a very, very difficult job. Witness my hand, corporal cell of the city of Durham, North Carolina, this is the seventeenth day of June, two thousand thirteen, and I will present this to Donna for any comments that he might have.
I'm a solid waste employee. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro temp, members of City Council, Mr. Bonfield, Mr. Ferguson. First of all, I want to say that Solid Waste Employees Appreciation Day, in my world, that's every day. Every day, they go out, they hit the road, they do a very, very, very good job. The Solid Waste Association of North America, our professional association, has designated today as Garbage Man Appreciation Day. I didn't particularly like that, I thought it kind of devalues what we do and it devalues hard-working folks, so I changed it to the title that we have it as today. The employees of this department will continue to work hard for the citizens of Durham, and on behalf of those hard-working employees, thank you all very much for the acknowledgement.
How you doing? Donna is President of the Durham Regional Association of Realtors and Durham Regional Represented from Crayons Two, Calculator, Calculators, and... Okay, well, I'm gonna let you all do all that you wanna do, huh? I'm just gonna present the proclamation. But this, this is, has to do with buses, but also has to do really with education and school supplies in Durham Public Schools, where school supplies enable and inspire school success, where sixty-two percent of students in Durham Public Schools qualify for free or reduced-priced lunch and are unlikely to be able to afford the supplies they need for their education, where its distributing needed supplies supports Durham's residents, students, and teachers, where since two thousand and two, the Durham Regional Association of Realtors has collected donations of school supplies in the months of July and August to enhance the learning opportunities of students of Durham Public Schools, where its trans to calculators have provided over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of supplies to Durham Schools and is growing, where its the city of Durham recognizes that the efforts of the entire community can help ensure that all students and teachers have the tools needed for a successful learning experience. Donation bins will be available in the real estate firms all over Durham or at the Durham Regional Association of Realtors at forty-two thirty-six University Drive in Durham, North Carolina. Realtors will fill the bus with supplies and deliver to Dr. Louis Farabee, the Durham Public Schools Chief of Staff, on August twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen. Crayons to calculators will facilitate an equitable distribution of all collected supplies to support Durham Public School teachers and students. Now therefore, I, William V. Bill Bell, Mayor of the city of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim August the third, two thousand thirteen, as two thousand thirteen Fill the Bus Day in Durham, and hereby encourage and call upon the citizens of Durham to observe this day by contributing classroom supplies to ensure that students and teachers have the necessary tools needed to achieve a positive learning opportunity. Witness my hand, corporal cell of Durham, North Carolina, this is the seventeenth day of June, two thousand thirteen, and I'm gonna present this to these two young ladies and let them introduce themselves, that's who they really are.
I'm Amy Cummings, I'm the Executive Director of Crayons to Calculators, and I just want to say thank you so much to everyone who provides supplies for our school students. Thanks.
Donna DeLong, Durham Regional Association of Realtors President, thank you very much for the acknowledgement. Thank you.
How you doing? This recognizes Olympic Day, where its for over one hundred years, the Olympic Movement has built a more peaceful and better world by educating young people through amateur athletics, by bringing together athletes from many countries in friendly competition, by forging new relationships bound by friendship, solidarity, and fair play, where its United States Olympic Committee is dedicated to coordinating and developing amateur athletics activity in the United States to foster productive working relationships among sports-related organizations, where its the city of Durham promotes and supports amateur athletic activities involving Olympic and Paralympic sport, where its the city of Durham assists organizations and persons concerned with sports and the development of athletic programs, will able-bodied and disabled athletes regardless of age, race, or gender, where its June twenty-third is anniversary of the founding of the modern Olympic Movement, representing the date on which the Congress of Paris approved the proposal of Pierre D. Corporal to found the modern Olympics. Now therefore, I, William V. Bill Bell, Mayor of the city of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim June twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, as Olympic Day in Durham, and hereby urge all citizens to take special note of this observance with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And witness my hand, corporal cell of the city of Durham, North Carolina, this is the seventeenth day of June, two thousand thirteen, and present this to Shane for any comments that you may have.
Just wanted to thank Mayor Bell and the City Council for proclaiming June twenty-third Olympic Day. Thank you.
Before I ask for comments from the members of the council, I failed to do something I had planned to do at our last council meeting, and I just, I just didn't do it. We all know that we, and again, when we talk about Olympics, it just reminded me again, we're a city of champions in many ways, not the least of which is in athletics, and we all know that Duke University was a champion in the cross conference a couple of weeks ago, I guess about three or four weeks ago, and I just think it's appropriate that we acknowledge them, and Mr. Mayor, if you could prepare a letter for my signature on behalf of the City Council to Duke University and the coach of that team. Having said that, let me ask whether there are other comments from members of the council. Recognize the Mayor Pro temp.
Good evening, I'd just like to again recognize the presence of my new godson, Emmanuel Coleman, he asked if I would be his godmother, and so I will proclaim publicly that I am now your godmother. Stand and let the people see who my new god is. He is an eight-year-old student at Eno Valley Elementary School, and I'm very proud of him.
Can I ask Councilman Shul?
I wasn't gonna comment, but since we're doing recognitions, I wanted to recognize my former colleague on the school board, Pastor Frederick Davis, who's here tonight. When I left the school board, Pastor said he was gonna be right behind me, but I think we're about six years in, Pastor, and you're still there, so good to see you tonight.
I don't often look at Facebook, but I just happened to open Facebook, and I saw that Deputy Manager Wanda Page has an appointment for four years to the Board of Visitors of the UNC system. Let us give her a round of applause. Stand up, Wanda. She's, she's sort of bashful, and so she won't stand, but congratulations.
I want to announce that on Wednesday, July the thirty-first, at nine o'clock a.m., would act the council to meet in the council, City Council Conference Room for the purpose of doing performance evaluations of the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk, and I understand the clerk has coordinated up everybody, so everybody's scheduled to meet that. And we'll go with the city manager, the city attorney, and city clerk in that order. Are there any other comments? If not, we proceed with the priority items by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening, everyone. Two priority items this evening, agenda item number twenty, which is the proposed fiscal year fourteen Planning Department Work Program, this item needs to be referred back to the city administration, and agenda item number twenty-nine, mini-assessment role for sewer main on East Cornwallis Road, this item also needs to be referred back and will be rescheduled for the first meeting in August, thank you.
On the city manager's priority...
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
Passes six to zero.
Recognize the city attorney for any priority items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no priority items.
Likewise, recognize the city clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, item thirty-eight has been added to your agenda, is a supplemental item, is an ordinance setting the filing fees for candidates to municipal office in the city of Durham for the election coming up in November of this year.
Entertainer motion, recognize the city clerk's priority item. It's been properly moved and second, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
Passes six to zero.
We will proceed with the agenda, of course, the consent agenda items may be approved with a single motion, if a council member or a person from the audit chooses to remove the item, we'll do that at appropriate time and recognize the comments. Again, I'll just read the heading of each one of the consent agenda items. Number one is Citizens Advisory Committee Reapportments. Item two is the Durham City County Environmental Affairs Board Reappointment. Item three is Street Acceptance. Item four is FY two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen Amendments to the Budget Ordinance, Grant Project Ordances, and Internal Service Fund Spending Plan Resolution, a resolution for using contingency funds and acceptance of a donation. Item five is fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget, two thousand fourteen through two thousand nineteen capital improvement plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Recognize Councilman Shul.
Mr. Mayor, I don't wanna pull this from consent, but I do wanna note that I would like my vote on five D to adopt an ordinance to establish a monthly rollout card solid waste fee to be recorded as a no. I have made my case on this known at the previous meeting and also at the previous work session and did not prevail, but I continue to feel that this is regressive and we'd be better served financing this in another way. I do know how badly we need this, the trucks and so forth that this is paying for, but I feel that we could be doing this in a better way, Mr. Mayor, so I'd appreciate it, recording a no vote on that for me.
Recognize Councilman Shul's remarks on that, recognize Councilman Cotati.
Similar to Councilman Shul, I have the same concerns and would have preferred to fund this with the property tax increase. I do support the additional vehicles for the solid waste department, so just wanna record five D as a no vote, thank you.
Clerk, we recognize that at appropriate time. Item six, wow, item six is approval of the assignment, assumption, and modification of the loan to Price Steel Place Housing, Inc. Item seven is mortgage loan originating underwriting agreement with Sun Trust Mortgage, Inc. Item eight is approval of an economic development initiative, special project subrecipient contract between the city of Durham and Calvary Ministries of the Western Community, Inc. Item nine is FY fourteen agreement to fund downtown Durham, Inc. for city economic development programs. Item ten is contract for city services and programs for the downtown Durham Municipal Service District FY two thousand fourteen. Item eleven is Ninth Street Infrastructure Project Development Agreement between the city of Durham and CP GPI Regency Irving LLC. Item twelve, a bid term contract for hydrophloric acid, flucic acid, eight hundred tons. Item thirteen is bid term contract for sodium hypochlorite, nine hundred thirty-six thousand gallons. Item fourteen is bids for term contract for liquid ammonium sulfate, four thousand five hundred and sixty tons. Item fifteen is bid term contract for liquid sodium hydroxide, two thousand tons. Item sixteen is Carolina Theater Agreement Extension. Item seventeen is compensation and classification plan recommendations. Item eighteen is employee assistance services. Item nineteen is twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen benefit recommendations. Item twenty is proposed FY fourteen planning department work program. Item twenty-one is Duke Energy, yeah, I just read, but I have it here, we'd accept it as a manager supplemental, a priority, I mean. Item twenty-one is Duke Energy Power Pole Replacement Android Driver Streetscape. Item twenty-two is under local agreement between the town of Hillsborough and the city of Durham regarding disposition of municipal solid waste generated in the town of Hillsborough at the Durham Transfer Station. Item twenty-three is shop rental agreement to multi-function print devices, agreement number one six eight one five zero three. Item twenty-four is pass-through agreement with Durham County for the allocation, disbursement, and accounting of Federal Transit Administration Section fifty-three sixteen funds. Item twenty-five is the grant project ordinance agreed between the city of Durham and North Carolina Department of Transportation for an apprenticeship intern program in data. Item twenty-eight is outdoor passenger information systems project. Item twenty-seven is bus refurbishment contract award, and items twenty-eight through thirty-two are items that can be found on the General Business, General Public Hearings, entertain a motion for approval, extended agenda with the exception of item twenty and twenty-nine. It's been properly moved and second, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes six to zero with Councilmember, Councilmembers Cotati and Shul voting no on the monthly solid waste fee.
Before we move to the General Business, General Public Hearings on assessments and improvements, since we have adopted the budget with the indicated comments, there's an item, and I had some discussion with the city manager on this side... item, and I had some discussion with the city manager on this side, some of you may or may not know that there's been a concern raised by the Board of County Commissioners in terms of funding of the warrant program. I've had a discussion with the sheriff and explained to him, from my viewpoint, why we made that decision at the time we did, but there's also been some concern that maybe the county might want to do a little bit less in terms of planning. I've told the manager, I support that, I mean, my position would be, I think, given what we're seeing, that, you know, quite frankly, we might be doing more planning in the city's jurisdiction than the county, and if the county commissioners want to take over the warrant program, I don't have a problem with that, and I don't have a problem with taking over additional money for the planning department. So I'm just throwing that out, at appropriate time, we can have that discussion, but that would be my recommendation. Recognize Councilman Cotati.
Thank you, Mayor. At the work session or the budget planning, I made my feelings clear about the warrant program. I do feel like we've addressed the backlog, and we've supported that program for several years, more than we initiated, initially planned. I do, I would like to have a much broader conversation about the planning department because I am very concerned about the implications of that because of the way the interlocal is structured. When the county reduces funding, it has a proximate or comparable reduction in the city funding, I believe, and so it has a much bigger impact than the, than the initial dollars would look. And, you know, Joint City-County Planning has, committee has looked carefully at the work plan, and I noted previously how much I appreciated the planning director's ability to incorporate the transit, the planning for affordable housing around transit, so we work to build things into that work plan, and I do believe that the county reduction in funding will have a significant impact. Of course, we haven't seen that, and we won't see that until August, but I, I just, without having the details, am concerned about that, so I just wanted to reflect that now. Thank you.
My suggestion isn't that we reduce the work amount, I guess my suggestion is if the county doesn't want to fund it, that we look very closely at funding it ourselves, and let them go ahead and do the warrant control that they raised a question about. Again, I haven't had a conversation with anybody on the county side, and I'm just, have read some media accounts, and I just had a conversation with the city manager, but I think it's appropriate time we can have that discussion. Recognize the Mayor Pro Tem.
I just wanted to make sure that the county manager understood that our agreement had ended. Was he aware, I mean, this is responsibility.
Do you mean the agreement for warrant control?
Yes.
Well, oh, clearly, we have been talking about two separate agreements, one, the three-month extension of the current agreement, and then the second piece was the new agreement that would go into place beginning October the first.
Because I know the comment was made to me by a couple of commissioners that the city council did not make them aware of it, and I thought that that was done by the administration, so maybe we just need clarity on the roles that we actually play.
Recognize Councilman Moffat.
I just wanna take a moment and say that I agree with you that I think that the long-range planning in this community is essential, and if the county's not gonna fund their portion of it, or not fund all of their portion of it, that it does fall to us to, to go ahead and fund that, because I think that the long-range planning, including affordable housing, and especially around future transit stops, is just so important to this community that we can't not do that, so you have my support.
Okay, recognize Councilman Brown.
Yeah, thank you, and I basically concur with all that has been, I basically concur with all that has been said, but I also believe that the last thing we need in this community is to get in a battle with those who happen to reside on the other side of the street, let us say the county government. Believe me, folks, at least in my judgment, we have enough challenges in Raleigh, as well as in Washington, DC, and we need to do what we can to work together for all the people of Durham County and Durham City.
Thank you. We move to the general business agenda, public hearings. Item twenty-eight, public hearing to consider ordering street paving on Clover Hill Place, Dunwoodie subdivision on Enabling Act authority.
Good evening, Mayor Bell, members of the council, Robert Joyner, Development Review, Public Works Department. Item twenty-eight is to consider the ordering of street paving on Clover Hill Place in the Dunwoodie subdivision from South Riverdale Drive through the end of the cul-de-sac. This is Enabling Act authority inside the city limits. Staff recommends that council adopt a resolution to order the project.
This is a public hearing matter, would ask for their comments by members of the council on this item. Is anyone that would like to speak on this item, independent of whether you signed up or not? Let the record reflect that no one in the public asked to speak on this item. I will declare the public hearing to be closed, matters back before the council. It's been properly moved to second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes six to zero.
Move to item thirty, approval of proposed amendments to the FY two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, and two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen annual action plans.
Good evening, Mayor Bell, members of the city council, Reginald Johnson, Director of Department of Community Development. This item is a reconciliation of several years' annual action plans, and I will turn it over to Will McConyers, a federal programs coordinator, to provide you with the detail.
Good evening, Mayor Bell, members of the city council. I am Will McConyers, Federal Programs Coordinator for Department of Community Development. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive citizen comments on the proposed amendments for the subject plans as outlined. The citizen participation plan contained in the adopted consolidated plan requires that a public hearing be held for formal amendments that either add, delete, or substantially change any consolidated plan or annual action plan. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the Herald-Sun via General List Serve and on the department's website on May sixteenth and in the Carolina Times on May eighteenth. The proposed amendments represent a reconciliation of grant funds to the city general's ledger in assist with the timely expenditure and administration of community development block grant funds and the home investment partnership funds to meet federal guidelines as prescribed and some recent federal programmatic changes. The proposed amendments represent a reconciliation of approximately one million three hundred fifty-seven thousand seventy-one dollars and eighty-six cents to the community development block grant program and one million six hundred ninety-nine thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars to the home program. The proposed amendments were made available for public review from May sixteenth through June seventeenth at the Department of Community Development, the Durham County Public Library at the city and county clerk's offices, and at the front desk of City Hall, in addition to the department's website, and was also distributed via a general list serve. Updates to the proposed amendments as it relates to the home program for the subject annual action plans were also republished on May twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen. Later tonight on the agenda, we request that council approve the proposed amendments to the FY twenty oh nine, two thousand and ten, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, and the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen annual action plans. In closing, comments from this public hearing and a summary of any written comments received from citizens concerning the proposed amendments will be included with the submission to the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you. The council has heard the report, questions, and comments by members of the council. Let me ask, this being a public hearing, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item, comments? Let the record reflect that no one in the public asked to speak on this item. I will declare the public hearing to be closed, matters back before the council. It's been properly moved to second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes six to zero.
Move to item thirty-one, public hearing on proposed sale of forty-eight lots in Southside.
Good evening, Mayor Bell, members of Council, Larry Jarvis, Department of Community Development. Because some of the buyers of the homes that will be constructed on the lots are not low to moderate income, we are required to ensure that we sell the property at fair-market value as determined by an appraisal, and to conduct a public hearing disclosing the terms of the sale. So following the public hearing, we would ask that council authorize the sale of the lots at the indicated value, and authorize the city manager to execute sales contracts and related documents for the conveyance of the lots to the home builders.
Thank you. You've heard the report and recommendation of staff. I'd ask for their questions by members of the council first. Hearing none, is anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? Let the record reflect that no one in the public asked to speak. I will declare the public hearing to be closed, matters back before the council. It's been properly moved to second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes six to zero.
Thank you. Move to item thirty-two, street closings, one hundred and nine linear feet of Irwin Road, street closing one two zero 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 four.
Good evening, Steve Medlin with the Durham City-County Planning Department. The request before council this evening is a request by Duke University to close roughly one hundred and nine linear feet of Irwin Road for a width of about one and a half foot because of a encroachment within the right-of-way of a existing wall, retaining wall there in front of the hospital. The request has been reviewed by all internal departments and by service and utility providers, and no issues have been identified. Staff is recommending approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing matter, public hearing is open, ask for comments from the council. Hearing none, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? Let the record reflect that no one in the public asked to speak on item. I will declare the public hearing to be closed, matters back before the council. It's been properly moved to second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes six to zero.
The supplemental item, item thirty-eight, ordinance filing, fixing filing fees for candidates to municipal office in the city of Durham. It's been properly moved to second discussion. Hearing none, madam clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes six to zero.
Thank you. Any other items to come before the council? Recognize the Mayor Pro Tem.
Clement was named Spectacular Man of the Year. I think it was given the Legacy Award for all of the contributions he's made. That was on Thursday night, and I did attend and represent the council.
Thank you.
So congrats. Congratulations, I'm sure he's watching us.
Any other items to come before the council? If not, the council's adjourned at seven thirty-nine p.m. Thank you.